Good evening, everyone. At this time, please silence your cell phones and be advised these proceedings are being recorded. For those physically present in the council chambers who desire to address the city council during the meeting, please complete or respect the request to speak form available at the front entrance at the city council chamber at the present is in this and presented to the city clerk. Speakers physically present and participating in V I zoom will be called upon at appropriate time, and each person will be allowed three minutes speaking time. And we'll go ahead and convene this meeting March 28, 2023 at 6:00 P. M., and we'll be in closing memory of Grand Terrace Lions member Don Smith. And Mayor Pro Tim Wilson would like to say a couple of words in regards to Don.
Folks, Mr. Don Smith, who was born in 1941, he grew up in Milwaukee where he developed his lifelong passion for the Green Bay Packers and a disdain for the Bears. After majoring in journalism at Parkville College in Missouri, he spent his professional careers in newspaperman, working as the editor of small newspapers in Wisconsin and Florida. In California, he was the city editor of the Desert Sun in Palm Springs. He moved to Grand Terrace in 1988 with his wife Lynn and their daughter Curry. He was a longtime member of the Grand Terrace Lions Club, joining in 1994, and served as president in 2003 to 2004. For his service to Lions and the community, he was selected as a Melvin Jones Fellow. Don was once recognized as the official Grand Terrace pedestrian by a former city manager because he would walk almost every day throughout the community. He passed away on March 6th this year and is survived by his wife, daughter, and two grandsons. He was my friend. He is at least indirectly responsible for me joining the Lions Club and serving there on for seven years, and he was a great mentor to me. I used to go over and visit him on a regular basis just before he passed away. Love the man, and I'm going to miss him, and I miss him actually every day. So we'd like to close in honor of of Mr. Smith today.
Thank you, Doug, and God bless his family. So please join me in vocation and after invocation, Mayor Pro Tim Wilson will be leading and pledge allegiance. Bow our heads, please. Hold on, Doug. God, thank you for bringing us here together tonight, you know, and just to give us the wisdom to do your will, Lord, and just continue to bless our first responders, God, and to bless our council, and to bless our residents here in the city of Grand Terrace and our city staff, God. And, God, special prayers for the families of the victims from Tennessee, God. We don't know why, but, Lord, I just ask that you wrap your arms around the people who lost loved ones and just give them care and comfort, God. In Jesus's name I pray. Amen. So A B 2449 to close or announce if there's any members of the legislative body participating remotely. So we have none? Okay, I'm City Clerk. We have roll call, please.
Councilmember Allen?
Here.
Councilmember Henderson?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Wilson?
I'm here.
Mayor Hussey.
Present. Are you sure this is the Mayor Pro Town has seen him since what, beginning of the year? Welcome back, Doug.
Councilmember Rodriguez Robles is absent. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. So item A, reordering or additions or removal of any items from the agenda? The council wish to remove any?
I'd like to remove item 12, please.
Remove item 12? All right. Item 12. That's our only new business tonight, so.
I apologize. May I interrupt one moment, please? One of the items, it was item seven, was missing the actual resolution attached to the opioid settlement. You have one placed at the dais for you to review. There's one, and there's been copies made for the public that's just approving the settlement.
All the opium settlement? Okay.
Yes, sir.
So we're removing item 12? All right. Okay. Okay, so this time we have a special presentation. Be introducing our six executive officer Diane Run- Runnels? Is that how you say it? With the San Bernardino County Children's Network and ask her to speak upon an electric. No, it's all yours.
Good evening, members of the city council. My name is Diane Runnels, Assistant Executive Officer with San Bernardino County. I wanted to thank you for declaring April Child Abuse Prevention Month. As you know, child abuse can take many forms, ranging from anywhere from physical and sexual abuse to neglect. In this city, we've had over 123 referrals for child abuse. Luckily, only 13 sustained in this county. Over 30,000 countywide referrals of child abuse. So it's a very important topic. Studies have shown that child abuse can have detrimental long-term effects to behavioral and physical health, so we appreciate your attention to this matter. If you know of a suspected child abuse case or you're aware of child abuse, please pick up the phone and dial 211. You'll be referred to a child abuse hotline or hotline for further investigation. Thank you again for your attention to this this important month.
Well, thank you, Diane. If you could just wait there, we got a proclamation because April 2023 Child Abuse Prevention proclamation. So thank you for coming up today, and I get to read this plaque that we're going to be giving to you. So, and I have the city clerk looking at me. Am I doing it right?
I need a larger one.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, okay, so we'll do this. Now I don't have no excuse. All right. Hey, this is too large now. City of Grand Terrace proclamation, the Child Abuse Prevention Month, whereas all children have the right to receive the care, protection, and guidance the family provides, to be free from harm and to have their physical, emotional, and educational needs met. The state and federal governments have proclaimed April 2023 as Children Abuse Prevention Month for the purpose of promoting community involvement and prevention of child abuse. And whereas more than 30,000 children in San Bernardino County were referred to the children and family services for suspected child abuse and neglect in 2022. And whereas adverse child experience ACE study conducted by Dr. Vincent J. Valletti and Robert F. Anda demonstrates long health, long-term health, social, and economic risk that results in childhood trauma. And whereas as the as the prevention of child abuse requires rigorous solutions, energy, strength, determination, commitment from certain citizens and entire community of the county of San Bernardino provides services professional in the field of child abuse who are dedicated, compassionate, and skilled in the prevention of child abuse. And whereas with the Blue Ribbon as the International Center for Child Abuse Prevention for San Bernardino County Children Network in partnership with San Bernardino County Board of Supervisors and the Members Agency of San Bernardino County Children's Policy Council and Child Abuse Prevention Committee have planned a Blue Ribbon media campaign, the 24th Annual Shine a Light on Children Abuse Awards Baskets during the month of April to increase awareness of children's abuse. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Bill Hussey, Mayor of the City of Grand Terrace, along with my fellow councilmembers proclaim the month of April 2023 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in the city of Grand Terrace and encourage citizens, organizations, schools, nonprofits, businesses, and other entities in the community to engage in activities and events to assist in the efforts to prevent child abuse and provide the children's physical, emotional development needs. Presented this 28th day of March 2023 and signed by myself and colleagues. And before we give you your award, and it's a it's a great, you know, thank you for doing this, but I'd like if my colleagues have anything to say. Councilmember Allen?
I'd like to also say thank you for all the work that you and your team and your office do for the communities in San Bernardino and for the children of San Bernardino County. It is really, really important, and I'm so glad that we have, my colleagues and I have taken, set aside a whole month to recognize this. Thank you for coming here and and speaking with us.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here.
Mayor Pro Tim?
As has been written, although I'll paraphrase it, you know, though any any that will harm these little ones, be better if he had a stone around his neck and drowned in the sea. And you are doing work that is sanctified, and I greatly appreciate the kind of work and the kind of time that I'm sure you devote into saving our little ones for the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Henderson?
I echo the comments of my colleagues. Be difficult to find a more noble cause than what you're engaged in and what we're all engaged in as citizens of the county of San Bernardino. Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for continuing to press ahead. It's a difficult situation to deal with on an ongoing basis, and it has to be emotionally draining. So we commend you for your work, your effort, and that of those that you work with, your colleagues.
Thank you very much.
Yes, I agree. Thank you very much emotionally for your staff seeing that, and I know our first responders who see it, you know, come to the first of the scene. And not only children, you know, you have teenagers that are going through this physically and verbally, and it's a sad road that that happens. And, you know, just knowing that there's there's love out there for them and that there's protection for them. And it's, you know, something might be going on, but, you know, even like there might be spousal abuse that the mother or the father can't protect the children.
And then so we'll move on to consent counter. Following consent counter items are expected to be routine and non-controversial, and they'll
So, you know, knowing that there's people that care and, you know, and the teachers helping them, and there's a lot, there's a big network in here to get this.
be acted upon by the city council at one time without discussion.
And I appreciate, you know, all the efforts and the continued work that, you know, you're
Any council member, staff member, or citizen may request removal of the items from the
doing, your department's doing, and, you know, it's not going unnoticed, and I know
consent counter for discussion. Do we have any requests to remove or discussion for consent counter?
it sometimes it seems like it's a fight that's never ending, but somebody's got to continue
Councilmember Henderson?
to fight the good fight and protect the innocents.
Yes, I have a comment on item number five, a question to the city attorney.
So, well, thank you. And then what we'll do, we'll go ahead, if you don't mind taking a picture, and we'll give you a proclamation. Plus, we have a
Absolutely.
a nice little key pin for you. I don't know what door goes to, but it's.
I'm prepared to vote to approve both items, but I just wanted a clarification on the
Thank you.
Community Benefits Fund.
All right, so we'll we'll pull that so you can ask the question. So item five?
Thank you, sir.
And council? Mayor Pro Tim?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to pull number nine.
And item nine for discussion. Councilmember Allen, you have anything? So can I get a motion for the remaining items, one through four, six, seven, eight, 10, and 11?
Motion. Motion.
Second.
And before we vote, city attorney to read, you have anything to read? You want to do your reading now, or?
I'll do the reading now.
Because I got in bold red letters not to forget to ask you because I asked her to put that there.
Let me bring up the title. All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The title of the ordinance is as follows. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Grand Terrace, State of California, finding zoning code amendment 22 dash 03 is exempt from SEQA pursuant to section 15061B3 and amending title 18 of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code by adding chapter 18.64, establishing objective design standard requirements. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So that was for item 11, right? Or which item? Was that for all of them?
That was for item 10.
10, I mean. I'm sorry. Okay, so can we have a vote, please?
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. So item five, Councilmember Henderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a Community Benefits Fund grant to a faith-based organization whose mission I believe we all strongly support. I'm used to seeing a non-proselytizing provision in such agreements, and I couldn't find it in this particular instance. The staff report lists four conditions, and it just seems to me that, at least for future reference, I do support this, but I think in the future, the no proselytizing provision should be made a part of any agreement with a faith-based organization.
That's a well-taken point. We'll we'll make sure staff's aware of that going forward. I will note that this is, my understanding is that this is a event that's open to in the entire public. It's not just to a limited group, as far as I understand, so I think that addresses that point. But again, the point's well taken, and we'll make sure that's addressed in the future. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's all I have.
So I have a question on that, so. Go ahead, Councilmember Allen. You want to ask one?
You sure? Okay. My only question was, and I'm with you on that, is is it is it too late to put something like that in there?
Well, in this case, there's no agreement or any document. It's just an approval of the award of the the grant, so it's just a minute action item. I will note that the staff report does identify what the public purpose is of the contribution, so that is addressed in the report. But I think going forward, it may make sense to have a resolution that goes along with it, but. So what the city manager suggested, which is a good point, is maybe approving the motion subject to a contingency that the the group, the church, sign a document acknowledging that, you know, the issue that you're raising, so just so it's addressed and we can prepare that document.
I think that would that would take care of the matter. I understand the public purpose, and it's clear, but having dealt with a number of organizations that proselytize as a matter of course, unless it's called to their attention, it happens
Sure.
on a dynamic basis for the most part.
Yeah, it's a fair point, and we'll address it. So I would ask that the maker of the motion include that contingency as well, and we'll prepare a one-page, one-short-page document that addresses it.
Okay, well, that answered my question. So do I have a motion?
So moved.
And I'll second you.
With the added amendments and that?
Right.
Okay. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Item number nine, Mayor Pro Tim?
Item number nine has to do with the appropriation of AQMD funds and the amount of $11,000, but more importantly, the appropriation of $107,000 from the general fund account. And there's a specific general fund account there for an electric bus. It's not covered by the VW Environmental Mitigation Trust grant or AQMD. I I'm a newbie on the on this whole situation with the Omni bus and and despite that, though, I can see, and I I have had several occasions over the last six weeks of my convalescence from this, whatever you call this procedure I had, and I keep seeing one person in a bus at a time. And so it seems to me that if we are actually going to dispense 107 grand from general from a general fund account, that we might want to kind of relook at our participation. $11,000 worth of of gimme from the AQMD funds is hardly a good exchange for $107,000 dispersed from a general fund account. So I'd like to, it would seem to me that it would be appropriate to hold on this until we can justify, further justify this expense. And I'm not 100% convinced that an electric bus is going to be a mainstay in our economy eventually. At this point, there's an awful lot of hair on whether or not the the electrical replacements for gasoline items are going to be able to be maintained. So it seems to me that there's a lot of if's left in number nine, and it might be better subjugated to a later timeframe.
So if if I can speak to some of those questions, and then if if you still want to push it off, we can. So we currently have a gasoline-powered bus. It is a cast-off from OmniTrans that is hitting end of life. We've spent about $7,000 getting it back up and running. It has been out of service since October, but that that vehicle is end of life. We've got a couple more years we're going to get out of it. Back in 2021, council approved a grant through the VW Settlement Fund to their portion of an electric bus. The grant is for about $150,000. When we went to go buy a bus, a bus is about $260,000, so we need to backfill that half of the grant. So we're using some money from AQMD money, some money from general fund, as you recall from, well, as you don't, you weren't here the last meeting or the last couple of meetings, I'm sorry, that we did have at mid-year a fairly significant surplus. So we're using this surplus and savings from our operations this year to purchase the bus. And then we also have funding from OmniTrans to build the electric charging station that we're going to need in the city yard. So it's not all just we're buying a bus, we're backfilling half of the cost of the grant for that bus. This is the senior bus that the city operates, and we actually have pretty good ridership on that. So it's not the one, the one person. This is the bus that runs from the senior center. In our downtime, we've really worked to create routes. We'll see how those work as we start running again, but the routes will take people out to Citrus Plaza, to the various hospitals in Loma Linda, into Riverside, into Colton. So every day, there's a different kind of a route, so the seniors are not just going, taking the bus to Walgreens, and that we we actually provide a useful service. If if that answers, or if you have additional questions, if not, we certainly can come back with a full presentation if you like.
I appreciate the comments, and I, and it does give us additional information to be able to base our decision on. I'm a numbers guy, as you know, and I like to see the numbers in front of me. And so I'd love to see something that says, something simple that says a ridership and, you know, how we justify, you know, the the cost per capita. I I just don't see too many heads in those buses, and maybe I'm looking at the wrong timeframe. But it sounds like to me that you have some information floating around in that noggin that I may not have, and and I wouldn't mind seeing that on paper, even if it's scribbled, so that so that we can move on with this purchase.
Well, let me just say, because that was going to be my comment, but I I'm on the OmniTrans board, and we had a five-hour workshop. Good point, because I made the comment with all the other mayors and stuff of the city that the SBX bus only see one driver and one passenger. Now, let me just say on this, so ridership's at 60% after COVID. There are 609,000 hours of the bus routes. They're trying to get up to 900,000. The biggest problem is frequency of the bus stuff, you know, the the stops and stuff. They're trying to bring it down to from 30 minutes to 15 minutes. Grand Terrace is a finger, we're not on the main path. And you asked about the electric buses and the gas, so the state mandate is coming out with all-electric, they have to get rid of all gas buses. And then the next one is the hydrogen buses. And the thing on the hydrogen bus, OmniTrans is developing problems because nobody wants a hydrogen plant in their backyard, so now they have to find property for that that's going to be feasible. So all electric buses are grandfathered, are going to be in there, all gas buses are going to be obsolete, and you, for us, you have to provide that service for them, the electric buses only. What's what seemed weird, because my question was about the LPG line that they spent $2 million to put in, and those CRG buses are getting phased out, too. So this is all state mandated things that are coming in. So that's why I'm just trying to emphasize on this thing that here. So our senior program, now give me if I'm wrong, it's it's mainly, that bus is mainly for the senior program, right?
This this is not an OmniTrans operated or owned bus. This is a city bus that we operate for the senior. It's for these seniors. I'm sure if somebody that wasn't a senior hopped on it, we wouldn't throw them off, but it is primarily from the senior center and to allow transport for the seniors to various destinations in the area.
So speaking of that, I do, when I go to the store and stuff, I do see that bus pretty full when it was operating, and the bus driver waiting, and the seniors waiting for that ride. So it's a it's a different beast than the OmniTrans SBX bus and all that system. So this is providing the service for them, and I think we already have a bus driver that we hired for this bus.
We have, we have a driver. The bus is actually past CHP inspection and is ready to hit the road. Our driver is, had to do one final drug test for CHP to get everything certified to run. So we should, could be operational by next, next Monday. And I don't, I know we have good ridership. I don't want to throw a number out there because I don't know what that number is. It's it's more than one, it's less than 50, but.
And our seniors rely on that bus, the ones that?
Our seniors use that bus. That's because our senior center is kind of on the edge of town, and there isn't a OmniTrans or bus route that that feeds that. But I cannot give you real ridership numbers to to be accurate.
Yeah, so Mayor Pro Tim, and I understand, because I, you know, being on the board, too, and I see it, and then then my other statement was, when I went to that, that board meeting was, well, how many of us mayors took the bus here to, and nobody did. So I don't know how to get on the bus. It's just, but, you know, but it is a service that some people need, and it's a service our seniors utilize quite frequent, and that's their, the way to to get their groceries, to get everything. And I understand the frustration. I mean, this is expensive, but we already approved it in 2021, so. So hopefully that answers some of your questions that I learned from the board that day. I just, I won't do it on my public thing, but I just wanted to share that with you. Councilmember Allen? Councilmember Allen, go ahead.
During the, I know that this, we've been working on this for years. I was questioning two city managers back when we were, I was asking them what the delay on this is, because we've been working on this for years. This mitigation fund from Volkswagen was settled, you know, sometime back. So that bus that we have right now, I know, you know, you talk about it being on its last leg, you know, and we keep bandaging that leg up. During the pandemic and even afterwards, when I was, you know, helping out over there over at the senior center, the the seniors are really dependent on that bus, and whenever it breaks down, which was often, it seemed like, it really impinged on their ability to maintain their their quality of life. So I know that they have truly been looking forward to this bus coming into service and being this reliable form of transportation for them, and I would just encourage us to to try to to acquire this as soon as possible for them.
Councilmember Henderson, you had something?
I appreciate the comments made by Mayor Pro Tim. Mr. Wilson?
I mean, this is expensive, but we already approved it in 2021, so hopefully that answers some of your questions that I learned from the board that day. I just, I won't do it on my public thing, but I just wanted to share that with you. Councilmember Allen? Councilmember Allen, go ahead.
During the, I know that this, we've been working on this for years. I was questioning two city managers back when we were, I was asking them what the delay on this is, because we've been working on this for years. This mitigation fund from Volkswagen was settled, you know, sometime back. So that bus that we have right now, I know, you know, you talk about it being on its last leg, you know, and we keep bandaging that leg up. During the pandemic, and even afterwards, when I was, you know, helping out over there, over at the senior center, the seniors are really dependent on that bus, and whenever it breaks down, which was often, it seemed like, it really impinged on their ability to maintain their quality of life. So I know that they have truly been looking forward to this bus coming into service and being this reliable form of transportation for them. And I would just encourage us to try to acquire this as soon as possible for them.
Councilmember Henderson, you had something?
I appreciate the comments made by Mayor Protim. Mr. Wilson, he's demonstrated over the years his numbers guy, and I, for one, rely upon his expertise in that area, along with Councilmember Roeblis. That said, I think the case for moving ahead is very strong, and that we should do that. If I can, Mr. Wilson wasn't here, but I recall for my colleagues that we recently met the new bus driver when she was introduced with, I think, two or three other new employees of the city. And she seemed well-suited for the position, enthusiastic, just the kind of person we need to provide the service to the senior and help ramp up additional service as time passes on. So my recommendation would be move forward on this item as presented.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
First, by Councilmember Henderson, second by Councilmember Allen. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. What I will do, though, for the next meeting, is just bring back what our ridership numbers are, since the question came up, and since I don't know that answer either, we can at least get it out for everybody.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on any item not appearing on the regular agenda because of restrictions contained in California law. The city council may not discuss or act on any items not on the agenda, but may briefly respond to statements made or ask a question for clarification. The mayor may also request a brief response from staff. The questions raised during the public comment may request the matter be agendized for future meetings. So do we have anybody for a public comment?
Yes, we do. We have four individuals. First is Bobby Forbes.
Bobby Forbes.
Thank you. First, I'd like to compliment whoever's taken care of the outside of the building. For the last eight years, it has not looked nice. It's looking nice now. The windows are clean, the plants are not dirty-looking, and it just looks so much better every time people come into the city hall. So thank you, whoever's in charge of that. I received an email after requesting the CUP for Vista Blue Mountain property. I received an email with the CUP, and then I received another email that was on City Letterhead for communications between the new owner and regarding that property. And it says that, it's signed from September of 2022. So this apparently has been in the works for quite some time. And I wonder, they changed the CUP from seniors only to the ages of 18 to 58, I think. Did that come before planning or council, or do I not understand that it doesn't have to? So that's a concern of mine. I have it in my email. It came from the city, so I know it's not rumor. And I would just like clarification, either from whoever can give it to me or by a private email would be terrific. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Forbes.
Next, we... Mayor, we can't really hear you this evening either. Could you do something about turning up the volume?
Sure.
Thank you.
AJ, can we check the volume again?
Next is Margaret Gonzalez.
Margaret Gonzalez.
My name is Margaret Gonzalez, and I am part of the Grand Terrace Community Coalition for Change. You can spot us in the back wearing the blue shirts. So I am here today to ask council to take action to protect youth like me from second-hand smoke in outdoor places such as parks, but also extend protections to include other places such as shopping centers and bus stops. I have these packets here with me, some resources that include a sample policy and a couple of comprehensive policy that was passed in Big Bear Lake a couple of years ago. With all the new tobacco products and devices available, it is important to make sure city policies are being updated to better define smoking and tobacco products, leaving no room for confusion and making a policy easier to enforce. Lastly, I am talking about enforcement. I would like to ask the city council to consider including a non-monetary penalty for people that are caught smoking, such as community service and other things related to that. Our coalition has been working hard to bring awareness to the importance of smoke-free outdoor spaces, and would appreciate your support in making this a reality for Grand Terrace. Again, my name is Margaret Gonzalez, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Margaret. You know, you could request to have an agenda item, and that might be one thing to bring to the council. City Attorney, would that be a thing that they could do, because we open it to the public and her concerns?
Okay, yeah, that sounds good.
Yeah, usually we'd go to the council for a future council item request.
So you could start the initiative on that, if you like, and you could get with the city clerk, and they could show you how to do that.
Okay.
All right? It'd be something that you guys could start and push.
Okay.
All right, well, thank you.
Well, thank you.
Next, we have Carolina Vicente.
Great. So good afternoon, Mayor Hussey and City Council members. My name is Carolina Vicente, and I am part of the Grand Terrace Community Coalition for Change. So I am here today just to once again invite everyone to our Walks for Smoke-Free Grand Terrace. So we are having our upcoming walk scheduled for Saturday, April 1st, so that's this Saturday, April 15th, and then April 29th at 3:00 PM at the Richard Rollins Park. And lastly, we just wanted to give a special thank you to Mayor Hussey and all the community members that joined us at our last walk. It was really great to see so many people come together and really just join our efforts in creating smoke-free spaces and encouraging healthy habits as well. So thank you so much for joining us. Yeah, thank you.
Well, thank you, and I enjoyed that walk. I think I got 40,000 steps after that, but it was a beautiful day and a beautiful event, so thank you for doing that.
Yeah, thank you for coming out.
Lastly, we have Cynthia Bedney.
Ms. Bentley.
I just wanted to bring one thing to your attention that I thought of when I was walking my dog around the shopping centers. She cut her paw, and she had to have stitches, not her pat, I'm sorry. She cut her pat. It was infected. It, $300 later, you know, and the vet and whatnot. She did that outside in the front on Barton Road. So it got me thinking that this should also be a part of the objective design, that who's going to maintain those properties, those surrounding areas of shopping centers, apartments? Nobody has any, as far as I know, it isn't a part of anybody's contract or agreement. And if it was a part of the objective design, could that take care of everything? Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Bentley. That's a good question, and we'll have the city manager contact you, and then we'll have, for any ideas, and then we'll have, for Ms. Forbes, too, we'll have good statements. So do we have anybody else for public comment?
No, Mayor.
All right. So public hearing, none. Unfinished business, none. Let me close the public comment, do it the legal way. I do it right there, Madam City Clerk. New business, we polled, item H, request for future agenda items by city council, none. So city council communications, we'll start off with Councilmember Ken Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At first, I'd like to welcome Mayor Protim Wilson back to our meeting in the dais, sorely missed, brings significant value to our overall efforts, and so it's great to have him back. Two weeks ago, I spoke about some of the impromptu meetings I had on Vista Blue Mountain during my daily walks. The last two weeks have been similar in that respect, and I've been impressed on certain issues and certain things that people have brought to my attention. What's been significant in those discussions has been the amount of disinformation that's been dispensed in the community. And so I can't sit here and overcome that. I can make a few suggestions, which I'm about to do, in terms of how we approach all issues in Grand Terrace. I don't want to sound flippant, or annoyed, or overbearing, but my first comment is www.granterrace-ca.gov, the official website address for the city of Grand Terrace. You want official information, you visit that site. You talk to staff, you talk to the mayor, you talk to the council members. What's occurred with respect to Vista Blue Mountain is a concerted effort to interfere in a private contract between two willing parties. It's unacceptable. It's not what Grand Terrace is about. It's the kind of issue that brings our reputation for welcoming development and new investment into community into severe dispute. And so I'm hopeful that those who have legitimate questions and wanted the actual information, the real information, the accurate information, the truthful information, will avail themselves of our official website, will avail themselves of the city manager's good offices, and receive information from the city manager and the director of Planning and Development Services, and whatever city department or division is involved with that particular development. I think what's been determined by the manager and staff is that the existing CUP for Vista Mountain applies to the proposed use. There's a change in age, but there's not a change in use, and there's not a change in intensity. So those who want to make that a significant issue are barking up the wrong tree, not only from a legal standpoint, but from a planning and development standpoint. If you visit it, and you avail yourselves of the resources that are available to you, I think the ultimate determination as it relates to this particular project will be cleared for all to see. I've attended, excuse me, I plan to attend two League of California Cities meetings. The first is the City Leaders Summit that the mayor, myself, and Mr. Allen are going to be attending in Sacramento. It's a significant enterprise on behalf of the League of California Cities. It's of tremendous value to all cities, but particularly small cities like Grand Terrace. I'll also be attending the Inland Empire Divisional Legislative Luncheon later on in the month of April. Those meetings occur on a regular basis, with the Inland Empire being one of the more significant divisions of the League of California Cities. I don't remember the total numbers, but there's only three cities out of about 500 in the state of California that are not members of the League of California Cities. It's a tremendous organization, and we benefit from it significantly by not only being paying members, but active participants, participating and supporting the activities, not only on a statewide basis, but particularly in the Inland Empire. So I look forward to those, and I look forward to sharing that information and participating with Mayor Hussey and Councilmember Allen at the same time. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Henderson. Councilmember Allen, comment?
During the January 10 council meeting, I made a comment from the dais about people of senior age, and more specifically, I said that the city council has become a group of grandpas and grandmas, or words to that effect. And so I want to apologize for making that statement, because it was insensitive, rude, and uncalled for. So, you know, being a grandpa myself, I can assure you that I did not mean to disrespect anyone with my comment. I do regret making this comment, because it did take attention away from what should have been a congratulatory event, which was when Ken Henderson joined our council. And that was the highlight of the evening, and that should have been, and I didn't mean to take away from that. And so my apologies for doing that. And so in the future, I'll strive to be more aware of how my comments may be perceived. So anyway, moving on, about a week and a half ago, I attended the Coffee with a Cop event at the Get Loaded Gun Store we have down in the industrial area. And I really enjoyed going down there and mingling around with folks in that environment, and it was really a fun event. And I'm really glad that Christie and Sally, the owners of the shop, are working with our county fire department paramedics in adding, you know, they have a responsible gun owner safety training classes that they teach at the gun store down there. And I like the idea of that, the Responsible Gun Owners class. And they want to add the Stop the Bleed program class to teach responsible gun owners how to stop, you know, bleeding whenever that may happen. So, and I'm really pleased, because it's a great environment for teaching that kind of a subject matter. So I just wanted to mention that and congratulate them on that. So yesterday, I attended the San Bernardino County Veterans Advisory Committee meeting. I'm the chairperson of that committee, and I have been for more than 10 years. I've been a part of that committee for, gosh, over 15 years. And, you know, we address issues that the county supervisor, board supervisors can help veterans with and their families. But what I wanted to bring to your attention real quick is the annual, 2022 Annual Report from the state was just released from the Association of County Veteran Service Officers. And there's a lot of neat information in here, you know, graphics about, you know, the demographics of veterans in our states. But I don't want to go into a lot of it, but the only two things I wanted to leave with you are that we have way over a million veterans in our state. And the county, our county veteran service officers throughout the state assist almost a million veterans in 2022, almost a million of them, just by the service officers. And they file claims, and they help them obtain their benefits in cash and also in services. And one of the things that I'm very proud of, of our Veteran Service Office in San Bernardino County, San Bernardino County does not have the largest number of veterans in the state per county. They're like number three or four, I think, actually, or maybe five. They have 93,000, about 94,000 veterans in San Bernardino County. By contrast, Riverside County has about, almost 120. Los Angeles County has about 270,000. Now, our office here in our county has submitted more than 2,000 more claims than the Riverside office, yet we have less veterans here, and about the same number of claims that the San Diego and the Los Angeles offices. Now, why is that insignificant? Because that equates to dollars coming back into our county in benefits. And San Bernardino County continues to be the number-one county in receiving federal benefits back into the county from the Department of Veterans Affairs, to the tune of about $41 million in 2022 alone. No other county, not even Riverside, L.A., San Diego, they weren't even half that, barely half that. And so I got my hats off to our service officers in our county for really stepping up to the plate and knocking home runs for our veterans in our county when it comes to... the plate and knocking home runs for our veterans in our county when it comes to getting them benefits and service benefits and retirement pay. And so that's all I have for you, and if any veterans out there, make sure you call the San Bernardino County Veterans Service Officer for your claim help. Thanks, Mayor.
Well, thank you, Councilman Allen, and thank you for the apology. Note on that, and thank you for continuing to work with the veterans and, you know, doing, when you went on to council, you know, we need the voice, and as veterans, and, you know, just to say, emphasize, I just called the veterans of the county today, and they're going to help me out, and one of the things is, being a vet, it took three, almost four decades before we decided, we deserve the benefits. We're proud, we don't want to ask for it, but when you start, and stuff starts happening, you realize, but they have always been there, and it's free. It does, you know, you don't have to pay for it, and they're really great people there. They work with the veterans, they're compassionate, and they really take care of you, and the VA has come a long way, you know, a very long way, the hospital and stuff, but thank you again. Mayor Pro Tim Wilson?
Thank you, Mayor. Obviously, I've been out of commission for a little while, about seven weeks total, but before I went in for this medical procedure, I had a friend of mine who was only two years older than I was, and he started out his message to me on the phone, and he says, "Looks like I'm at the end of my rope." And after that, I had two friends pass away, one was 71, the other one was 83, who was Don Smith, that made me think a little bit. When I get up in the morning and I, you know, raise my leg up to the point where I can actually balance myself and get out of bed, I realize I'm starting to look like the Cryptkeeper here slowly, but surely we all get older, and we have time on our side as long as we have time. And so I would recommend that we get involved in our community as much as possible because those future generations really count on us, and it's important that we leave some kind of a legacy of service to those future generations. And I want to say that, welcome to Councilmember Henderson. I do believe this means that I am not the oldest one on the council now. So that's great.
That's true.
So, anyway, that's about all the communication I have, and hope to have much more coming up in the next weeks. Thanks.
Thank you. So I already talked about OmniTran, so I'll have to mention that. The rave concert that we had, I mean, if you dialed the noise complaint and did the thing, I dialed them twice because at 10 o'clock on Saturday, I could feel it, I could hear it. So I went to bed, and with my hearing aids off, it woke me up at 12:30 at night, and so that's pretty bad if, you know, I can't hear that well, and then I'm hearing it and feeling it, my hearing aids off. The gentleman on the phone was very nice. They did turn it down at 10, but I think they cranked it back up at, you know, because they knew they were going to stop for a while, so. I have no problem with people enjoying themselves. My issue is that hindering on other people's peace and quiet, and, you know, their quality of life, that's, and then, by all means, celebrate, have a good time, but other people don't want to celebrate, you know, but just respect. And I did pull up the San Bernardino City Ordinances, and they're actually supposed to be curfewed on noise at 10 p.m., so I don't know where this might go. I know we've been putting up sound barriers and all that stuff, and so it's a continuing issue, and everybody's on it, and I'm sorry to the residents who quality of life was taken away for hearing that, and, but yeah, so I live here, and I heard it, and I can't hear that well, and I still heard it, so I'll move on. So another thing, the Coffee with a Cop, you know, like Councilman Allen said, it was a great turnout. We had, what, four residents and a lot of cops, so that's the first time the cops were outnumbering the residents, so. But once again, you know, thank you for putting the effort and, you know, opening up for any questions that you, that the public had. Hopefully, we could do one in the evening time at people at work, you know, but I know your officers are busy too, and they're real receptive, and thank you for, Get Loaded for opening their doors for this event, and it was a, it was a milestone too, because the original owner, Terry McQuire, it was his birthday that day, so I'm sure he was up there smiling. But, yeah, it was, and questions were answered. I did pray over the officers, you know, and I pray for the first responders every day, you know, you guys are in my prayers, and, because I know it's a hard job, and you want to get home to your families, and, you know, just like the officers that responded in Tennessee, you know, God bless them for stopping what can be worse, and so you don't know what's going to happen every day. And so on that, we had the Living Word Church, who was putting on the Easter egg extravaganza, which I'm glad Councilman Henderson brought us, so it will be within the legal guidelines and that, but it's pretty neat because the Easter egg hunt was an old event that happened in Grand Terrace, and the residents want to bring back other events, so it was nice that the Living Church thought of this, and they're going to have that Easter egg hunt on April 8th from 10 to 12 at Richard Rawlings Park. So Saturday, you know, us who are religious practices, you know, can still attend church on Easter, but it's going to be a neat family event, and they had, I think they sent over 20,000 eggs, and like, well, your church must be rich, because I can't afford eggs, but it's plastic eggs, so I never thought plastic eggs would be cheaper than real eggs, but there you go. But it's going to be a good family event, it's open for everybody in the public, no matter what religious denomination you are, it's just open for the kids to have a good time, families to have a good time, and there's going to be face painting and all that, so it's a good community event. Another community event is the pop-up prom shop for Three Bs. It's going to be this Saturday from 12 to 3. It's to help seniors, you know, get ready for their prom who can't afford it, and I know money can be tight, especially during graduation, but this is nice that parents and businesses are trying to help the seniors, so. That's over by Woody's, if you don't know where the Three Bs, and if you see something going on, you know, they welcome, the public's welcome to, you know, come to that event. Let's see, so. So when, the Living Word, I introduced him, he wanted to meet Lieutenant Lane for their Hope Program because the Living Word Church has a homeless program, so we were able to combine the efforts to meet, and Lieutenant Lane introduced him, but just listening to it being a fly on the wall, because, you know, just want to hear what they have. Of course, is the homeless issue. The homeless issue in the city, we do have more homeless, state of California is 30% homeless in the nation. We're not going to be immune from it. I know back in the day, we had one homeless person, that was it. Most of our homeless issues are, people are comfortable here and have some kind of family support or help, so when the family's supporting or helping them, giving them a little bit, they're going to still stay here. Or some of the kids who are the families who are actually cannot deal with them anymore, kick them out of the house, but they still stay here because of friends. And so there's always a community, somehow they're connected with the community. So we had actually a homeless gentleman here, and he asked me for money, he says, "I walked in the door that Wednesday," and I said, "Well, today must be your lucky day, God's looking after you," because we offered him shelter, a new way of life, you know, counseling, Living Word Church. So Living Word Church and our Hope Team had him sit there, and they went back down there, and he denied it, and he disappeared, and he's been asked again. So being that, why I'm saying that, because when you go to shopping and stuff, and we have them out there in front of shopping centers, we found out there's certain guidelines that the city has to do to make it, you know, no laundering and no panhandling, you just can't go in there, and the sheriffs just can't do anything, but there has to be ordinances and laws. So if a homeless person's extorting a business by saying, "Give me a burger," or "Give me some money," and I'll leave, please, please call the sheriffs and report it, because if you just say that's the way it is, if we don't have any record or anybody being called, and then the sheriffs, that limits their abilities, what they could do to take care of this, to stop it from escalating to something serious, and to help the homeless person on the right path, so please call, because that is happening. And, but yeah, so, do I feel sad for the homeless? Yes. But now am I mad at the homeless? Yes, when they don't take advantage of the, you know, the programs that they have. Let's see, the, so Coffee with a Cop. Oh, and then, thank you for your walking around, you know, Richard Rawlings Park, we did have a good time, it was beautiful weather that day, and hopefully you'll have more residents coming. They gave me a little thermometer, you know, to keep track of my steps, so at night, I sit there and I wiggle it, you know, act like I'm still walking, but. No, it's a great event, they have a t-shirts, and, you know, it's a great thing that you guys are doing, you know, it's, it's to stop smoking, Grand Terrace, and I was going to bring that t-shirt, but it had a display, do you guys have it? Or you have the, yeah, so there's like the lungs there, and it has, it's a really neat logo you guys have there, and to represent that, and then, you know, taking those steps to help teenagers' awareness for smoking, you know, because that was been the thing is, you know, they kept, well, even the state kept pushing no smoking, no smoking, because the ill effects it has, and then now all of a sudden, we're pushing marijuana, so I don't understand what's going on, so. But thank you for stepping up and doing that, and like you said, if you want to get ahold of the city clerk, so you guys could start the agenda to us and start the ball rolling, so that way your name could be on it for your fight, okay? And, I think that's all I have. Thank God. So, where am I going to go? Oh, lost my train of thought here. So I'll close the public comment, and the city manager, you have anything?
I'm going to let the sheriff go first.
Okay. Lieutenant Lane?
Good evening, Mayor, and councilmembers. I also would like to echo your sentiments about the Coffee with a Cop at Get Loaded. I think it was a great event. I think that location was perfect for it. I think it was very interesting, and just being there sort of created a bunch of dialogue between the folks that were there. I would like to see more people from the city show up to those things. It's a great opportunity to come out and meet, you know, and not just hear from me, but hear from the guys that are out on patrol here in the city, and our detectives, and then our command staff. We, I've talked with the city manager about alternative times, maybe the next time doing an evening one here at City Hall, make Cookies with a Cop or Ice Cream with a Cop, something along those lines that would cater more to those folks that work during the day. So we'll take a look at that, we'll look for something in the next month or two and try to put that together. I think that'll be another great opportunity, and again, I strongly encourage anybody that wants to come and hear from us or have any questions at all about, you know, what we do and why we do what we do, to come out and ask those questions, you know, we don't shy away from anything, we'll answer whatever we can, and that's, I think that's just about everything so far. We haven't had one, we haven't answered. So I want to, again, thank Christie and Sally at the gun store, they were great hosts, they took care of us and fed us and gave us good coffee, and I think, I think the business even saw some sales that morning, so glad to hear about that. So the other thing that I had for you, and I'll just touch on the homeless thing real quick since it came up, and I too also want to stress to people that they really should be calling us, and not friends or people that they know when they see something with a homeless person that's maybe a little bit troublesome, or if they see something illegal. You know, we, being homeless itself is not a crime, and we need to be very careful as law enforcement when we stop and talk to people, that when a conversation may seem like a detention, and we just can't go around detaining people, violates their civil rights, unless we have a legal reason to do so. So when we have a complaint from somebody in the community saying that they're being harassed, or that they're seeing something potentially illegal, they need to call law enforcement, and we can go, and it gives us the authority and the ability to take some action there. We want to be able to have those foundational legs to stand on when we do that. We have to make sure that we do things the right way, and that we afford everybody their, you know, their rights that they're due, even homeless have rights, but we need to do it in the right way, and we can, we can work together to solve these issues here in the community, and it's what we do, and we have programs designed to do that, but we need to be involved. So I know that there have been a lot of cases that people have not called us, and I end up hearing about it through conversation, and, you know, at that point, the water's already under the bridge, so, you know, give us a call, and we'll send somebody up. Last Saturday, I also received a couple of phone calls and some inquiries about why we had so many deputy sheriffs running around the city giving people tickets. So I think I mentioned it at the last meeting, but on the 25th, we had our OTS Grant Day here in the city, where we had a couple deputies out there, they worked a shift looking for primary collision factor violations of vehicle codes. Those are things that generally are found to be key indicators or key contributing factors to collisions, and the collisions in the city, the statistics are actually what enabled us to receive the grant funding that we did. So we were out there looking for these primary collision factors, which include DUIs, speeding, stop sign violations, distracted driving, those kinds of things. So during the course of that day, my two guys out there, they stopped a total of 17 people, they wrote a total of 15 citations for specifically those violations, but there were other citations that were written as well that we didn't track because it's not specific to this reporting requirement, but they stayed very busy that day, and I hope that their presence out there is appreciated, and for those folks that were driving safely and didn't get stopped, or the two that got stopped and didn't get citations, they probably got the message. So what we do out there is as much about enforcement or education as it is enforcement, so we want the city to be safe and follow the speed laws and all the safe driving laws, so everybody gets to go home from wherever they're going. So unless you have any other questions, that's all I had to report.
Does the council have any questions for Lieutenant? Councilman Allen?
Hey, Lieutenant, is there another, do you have a date yet for another Coffee with a Cop?
I don't have a date yet, I'll work with the city manager on finding something, but maybe towards the end of April, beginning of May.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Well, I have a comment, you know, thank you for doing that, and, you know, and always being there for the city and telling us about, but, you know, it was nice, well, it wasn't nice, it was needed to see officers pull, you know, violations over, and, you know, to be proactive, and I know you guys can't be everywhere all the time in the city, and I do get a lot of complaints about people speeding down the street, and I yell at people speeding down my street too, it's just, I don't know what's going on, so. My street is not immune, I got people asking for slowdown signs on their streets and everything, and I go, "Well, we could put a slowdown sign, but people aren't even stopping at stop signs," so I appreciate you guys doing that. But then again, I get a comment, like, "Why are they pulling, you know, people from Grand Terrace over and stuff?" So I don't know, you know, I just, but, you know, thank you for the efforts that you guys do, you know, and, you know, making our city safe, and hopefully, you know, the 17 that you pulled over, hopefully it might have, it might have saved somebody's life, you know, they might have, you know, second thoughts about doing it, but, you know, I know, you know, you have other things to do, you know, but traffic is of big importance because it does lead to other things, you know. My son, who's a police officer, and when they pull somebody over, sometimes something snowballs into something else. But being that said, so we had, I had a resident, I don't know if you guys were, and is on, the mailboxes are getting broken into again, and so, you know, besides them checking their mail and putting lock boxes on, I just wanted to inform you guys, you know, I don't know what time of day they're doing it, you know, when I caught the guys breaking the mailboxes, middle of the day following the mailman, and then I took pictures of the car and everything, and the three people that were in the car actually had a stolen credit card from a rental car, so I don't know what did, but, but still being proactive. But thank you again for doing that, and anytime we get a grant for traffic, that's all right with me, I'm sure it's all right with the rest of the council, you know, so, but thank you again for everything you guys do. And city manager?
Yeah, I'd like to welcome Mayor Pro Tim Wilson back, and we've really missed him, and all I can comment on is, the only thing worse than not, than getting older, is not getting older. So, welcome back. So welcome back. I got, my crack city staff got you some ridership numbers, so if you're ready for those, I can give them to you. On the bus, our last full month of operation was August. We had, on a daily basis, between 10 and 25 riders per day, low and high, with averaging about 15 riders per day. Those riders took 18 to 50 unique trips from place to place. So we're having riders that are going multiple places, from the senior center to Walgreens, Walgreens to, and I'm using that as an example, to someplace else, and then to someplace else, and then back. And so between 18 and 15 unique trips, with about 25 unique trips per day. And that was for our last month of operation. So we are not running an Omni-Trans bus. There's not the driver and one person on it. There's a couple more. With the rains and all the activity, we've had a lot of potholes coming up. We've got a nice little window here for the next, yesterday, today, maybe tomorrow, that we'll patch what we can. Thank you for approving the item for paving, a $1.7 million paving project. By the end of this fiscal year in July, we'll have paved five miles of streets in the city, primarily the main streets in the city that really needed. I know Pico is really bad. We did some patching earlier in the year. It desperately needs it. Lockadina, I think they're still searching for a truck there at one of the intersections. So we desperately need it, and we're working forward to that. We should have that done in the next six weeks or so. There was a discussion about the helping seniors for the senior prom. We have, the city has, an internship program for any Grand Terrace resident who is a graduating senior, a 25-hour internship. We will pay you. You can earn your way to the senior prom, to grad night, to whatever that is. So if you're short the money, if you're trying to earn your way there, and you're proud enough to not take handouts, we have a job for you that will get you to where you want to go. And on top of that, it looks good on your resume, and it looks good on a letter of recommendation for college or your future work. And then finally, we've, we've had several years of priority projects, council agenda requests, and so at our next meeting prior, we'll have a workshop prior to the meeting, we'll probably start at 4 o'clock, to go over these, work out to see what is still a priority, what is not a priority, and reassess where we're at. I think it's very important that we do that on a fairly regular basis. It's been years since we've done that. And as, as times change, our priorities change, and so that we focus on the right things, and we're not going back to things that maybe we don't need to and are missing things that are important. And with that, thank you very much.
Thank you, city manager. And what a great program you're having for seniors to earn extra money. Do they make more than us per hour? Because I'm wondering if I should go work there.
Yes, and I have a broom with your name on it, should you choose to.
Hey, I have no shame in my game, but, you know, that's a good program. I mean, get a little extra money for, you know, the sharing the costs and stuff. And, you know, to have that program, I mean, I'm impressed that, you know, you're thinking about that for them. So, but I want to thank all the city staff and my colleagues tonight, and, you know, and Councilman Robles, she's not here tonight, and, you know, prayers for her. And, you know, the residents who came out and spoke, and everybody that came in public comment, you know, it doesn't go on deaf ears. We do hear everybody. The city manager will be getting with the staff who has questions, you know, to, if you could do that for us. And, you know, the residents coming out, and the city staff, you know, my hats off to you city staff for all the work you guys do. You know, sometimes it seems like a non-glorified job, or, you know, it's a never-ending battle job, but, you know, it's, we rely on you to keep our city going. And, you know, to do our budget, Christine, you know, thank you, and the city clerk for, you know, keeping us in line on the agendas. City attorney making sure we don't do the wrong thing, and, you know, our fire department and our police force protecting us. And I don't know about the city manager, you know, he's all right, but, you know, thank you, Conrad, for, you know, doing your job and stuff, you know? And then our sound booth, you know, working up there. So, you know, all the city staff here is, you know, we appreciate the work that you do. And so before we have a no-close session, and before we adjourn, in remembrance of Don Smith that we're closing the meeting on, Proverbs 12:25. And, you know, I know, like I said, this what happened in Tennessee, you know, it really hurts, and, but, you know, anxiety weighs down the heart, but a kind word cheers it up. So, you know, say a kind word to somebody, you know? Don't, just always be negative, and make somebody's day, cheer them up. So our next regular council meeting will be held Tuesday, April 25, 2023, at 6:00 p.m. Any request to have an item placed on a future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the city clerk's office, and a request will be processed in accordance with the city procedures. So with that, we'll go ahead and close. Everybody, God bless, have a good night.